Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the monthly Nacusa School District School Board meeting. It's six thirty on November eleventh and, uh, shoot, Mr. Shear, could we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gezi.
President.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Shear is here. Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Huestead.
President.
Oh, President of Congress.
Hey, pledge allegiance.
At our school, Mr. Huestead is gonna lead us in the-
Lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as always, we have a-
I have a question for the scouts. What holiday is today?
Just back from state.
Hey, look at that.
Hi, Mackenzie.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mackenzie. She is our student representative on the school board. First meeting today.
She got a little taste last month.
Um, virtue, virtue card readings, uh, we have, uh-
I have a nice-
What is our virtue today?
The virtue is reliability. Reliability means that others can depend on you. You keep your commitments, you give your best to every job. You are responsible, you don't forget, and you don't need to be reminded. Other people can relax knowing things are in your hand, reliable hands. You are practicing reliability when you make promises you can keep. When you really care about doing what you promise. When you return things you borrowed.
I'm getting better at that.
When you plan ahead. When you do your best and finish on time. You are practicing reliability when you find another way if obstacles occur. Affirmation of reliability. I am reliable, I keep my promises, others can depend on me. Nothing can stop me from giving my best. Reliability.
Thank you, Bob. And, um, I'll read the, uh, school district of the Nacusa Board of Education guidelines. These are guidelines that the school board put together and, uh, and pledged to follow. Uh, the guidelines are as follows. We will work together as a team establishing an environment of trust and respect which will serve as a role model for the community despite the challenges. We will balance the needs of our district while remaining cognizant of our community's ability for financial support. We will work collaboratively toward the common goal of student learning, educational innovation, and instilling the desire of lifelong learning with the involvement of the, of community stakeholders. So those are our Board of Education guidelines. And, uh, Mr. Whitmore, we have, uh, we have some scout guests here tonight.
Yes, Mrs. Kalaski, would you please introduce your- Is this your scout troop?
I'm just a parent volunteer.
Oh, nice.
Um, yep, thank you. We're from Wisconsin Rapids. It's troop one eighty-nine. Um, so, one eighty-seven.
Just checking in, see if you guys-
Good thing you weren't listening, Bob. Um, one eighty-seven, um, they're working on a community, citizen, uh, community badge. It's a eagle-required badge. And, um, they're here observing the board meeting. They need to learn how to, um, they're watching for debate tonight. So how you would come to consensus or, um, compromise, so.
Sure.
They're trying to see some different ideas that you might share during the board meeting.
Very good, very good. Well, welcome.
They will have to put together a presentation then for their pack.
Oh, very good, very good.
Nice. Good luck. And, and if you do have questions afterwards, if you're, I mean, if you stay for the whole board meeting, the board'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. They did do some interviewing on, as the board made their way into the boardroom, so. There we have it.
All right. Um, as always, we invite public comments, uh, and this is the time to do that. So are there any public comments, concerns? Anyone wants to raise any comments, concerns? No? Nothing tonight? Okay. Then next on the agenda is, um, our student staff presentation. Mr. Osterbrink, you're leading that?
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good to see you guys.
As you can see, the solar installation is moving along. Uh, I have a couple of students with, uh, with me for this. Dakota Smith and Jacob Mueller. And they're gonna help us, uh, just tell us what took place here, where we're going from here. Uh, Diana, could you hit the?
On day one, we, uh, put together molds for the cement. So the base that we put the bolts in, we poured cement in and leveled it all out. And, uh, we had them on strings so they were perfectly aligned. So the, so our panels wouldn't be crooked.
Now, did, uh, how did you know how large to make the form?
Uh, they had them pre-made from other schools.
Okay. It was, we had to dig them though. And then level out every spot in there with a laser level. Make it perfectly level. And all, they all have to be in line, otherwise it won't work.
Did you have to, uh, know exactly which direction to point them?
Uh, south.
Straight south, yep.
Straight south.
Uh, the ballast base there, it, it comes with a recommended size from the company. That's what to do and, uh, and just as the word applies ballasted, the weight there is gonna keep them from catching the wind and tipping over. So it's, uh, maybe it'd be heavy enough to, to take care of that, so.
Uh, each of those nuts that are holding that frame together were tightened at fifty pounds per square inch.
Mm, yep.
Yep. Uh, precisely, otherwise you wanna damage the, the metal and that could cause deterioration earlier. And we wanna make these last as long as possible. And those rails just slide into each other. Um, thank God, they're all perfectly level and in line, which is a miracle. And that didn't work so well at Midstate. They had it all warped and crooked. But it turned out pretty well.
His, his, uh, turn there at Midstate, they had some of their students put them up and they seemed like they kinda rushed it, so you looked down the backside and things got some bows to them and that. And, uh, you look down ours and it's, it's nice and straight, so. Uh, the work with the Midstate people here and our students, they made sure they got it just right.
Um, on day two, it was two weeks ago.
Yep.
On the Tuesday, we dug a trench eighteen inches deep. So we put electrical to the box, you can see in the back. And it goes to the shed that, where all the power goes to. And, uh, if you see there, there's copper wiring that goes to a copper pole that goes eight, eight feet in the ground.
How many were there?
Two. And they're five feet apart.
Two, two, uh, grounding rods for each panel?
It, it was one for the whole thing.
Okay, okay.
Yep. They're all connected.
Two for the whole thing.
Uh, two for the whole thing, yep. So, so the students drove the rods down and helped make the connections and-
Did you ask questions about that while you were doing it?
Yeah.
It seems kinda awkward, doesn't it, to be driving such long pipes in the ground?
And, uh, the trench that went over to that, uh, the students dug that and, and helped lay the, the conduit for that, so.
Did, they, how did they dig that, Dave?
Shovel, just-
Oh, they dug it by hand?
About eighteen inches.
Yeah, okay, well, that's a little work.
Yep, so, yep, we handed some shovels up and they went to digging, so.
Better than sitting in math class.
Point well taken.
Uh, if we look on the back of these, uh, the solar panels, we can see towards the top rail, there are some black boxes that are behind them. Those are the microinverters. You would actually only need one of them for your whole solar array. But what, uh, they wanted to do was to be able to, uh, allow for a little more research into it and take a look at that. And they put one on the back of each panel, so when we pull this up on the website, once it gets up and running, uh, you can check to see how well each panel is working compared to all the other ones.
Hmm.
Okay, so if one's putting out two hundred and forty, uh, watts and another one's putting two forty-four, and then you can just check to see what they are- You can take somebody out there with an umbrella and hold it over and you'll be able to get the reading right there on your laptop or whatever you're, you're on, right there to see, see the difference. Or after a while, go out and have someone clean some of those and see the difference in cleaning them. So, uh, it'll be nice to show that, that aspect of, uh, of the, the solar, the efficiency. So there's a microinverter on the back of each one of those panels. And, um, once it gets okayed for, from the power company, we'll be able to bring that online. Uh, it's, everything's ready, it's set, it's ready to go. But the power company isn't gonna let you flick the switch until everything is signed off by a certified person that everything's right. So, uh, right now, all the paperwork is getting done and signed and they're getting it back to the Midstate people and, and that, so.
What is the anticipated benefit of, um, power that will be, um, brought in by these solar panels?
Uh, yearly, they figure it's gonna be somewhere around, uh, three hundred dollars a year, cut off of our, our bill, so. And, uh, it's set up to go directly into our usage line, so we'll use that power and, and, uh, that'll be, you know, roughly three hundred dollars that we don't have to spend because of that and-
It's supposed to take thirty-three years until you start making a profit. That's how it's passed.
That was gonna be my next question.
Roughly, yeah. So, yeah, we figured that out the other day. Uh, again, a, a little bigger system and you're, you're going up. But they said a system this size, if you had a small two-bedroom home and you had everything upgraded electrical-wise, used the LED lights and, um, um, low wattage, everything, you could, uh, probably take care of all your electrical needs for that small two-bedroom home for a year, or come real close to it, so.
So did you fellows learn how this thing generates electricity? Like, what does it do to generate electricity?
Really, how, okay.
I forgot the phrase.
Photovoltaic cells is what they're doing.
Yes.
I, I forgot the term.
Yes.
So it converts, it basically converts the sunlight into electricity?
Mm-hmm. Uh, any other things you guys wanna talk about with, uh? Dakota, you were around when we were putting the panels on.
Yeah, uh, there's cl- clips that we bolted down or that have little pieces of metal that may contact each, uh, panel. And they're, uh, like, there's one on top and they, on next panel, there's one on bottom. They like swapped them each time, so they went, had them on one straight line there, swapped. I mean, just even the way out. Well, uh-
It's there for conductivity through there, for the, to make sure that the, the whole system is grounded properly. Because with those, uh, uh, rails, even though they're, they're steel rails and they're, uh, uh, set up with galvanize, uh, we know that they can corro- can, it can corrode up over time. And by having these little clips that dig into the back of that, which connects all of them together, you're covered them for, uh, your ground if there's a lightning strike or something.
You only can use them once. If you put it down, you mess up, you gotta switch them out, 'cause they're junk after you did once.
Yep. Especially designed to dig in just right and-
So I've got a question. What did you find most interesting in working with Midstate? Was there any aha moments or?
They're fun to work with. They are fun to work with.
Big chunk. That's why I was there saying, big chunk. I don't know what it, what it meant, but shovel under and big chunk, and just throw it over their shoulder.
So how long did it take you to set the whole system up?
First day, when we dug the, the ground up, it took about maybe two hours. Got all three, um, spots cleared and then the cement truck, we came, went in eight and then the cement trucks came and then, next time we went out, it was all solid. We took the forms off, so probably a total altogether, I would assume, like, five, six hours.
Uh, yeah, the Midstate people were there from eight-thirty till noon, two different days. And by the time they get it packed and that, we've got three good hours working with them. So that's six hours there. And then, uh, construction two class, which Jacob's in, we were out, uh, a couple different days. One day to take the forms off, make sure that was taken care of. And then, uh, we put all the, the metal brackets up and the rails on and had that ready to go. So that when they got here the second time, that had, didn't have to take place first and we could make sure we got as far as possible, so. Um, so there was probably close to eight hours of, of time in.
So now, in your construction classes, is there an intended, are you going to be monitoring?
Yes.
And doing some work with them?
Yep.
And I know the science department is, is, as well.
Yep. Yeah, besides the two construction classes, uh, the intro to engineering class was also part of this. And worked, uh, both days.
Nice.
Yep, so. So, and, uh, once it gets up and running, then we're gonna cover, uh, the solar some more. We were out to Midstate one, uh, one day with the, all three classes. Uh, spent a couple hours there, uh, hearing about the, their setup and covering how photovoltaics work and, and, uh, that. And there's gonna be more, uh, education parts coming with them. All their, uh, handy gadgets for analyzing, uh, homes, buildings, for energy efficiency, we'll be able to use. They're gonna come and demonstrate those and then we'll be able to, to check them out and use, you know, the infrared one that they, they show on TV. Sometimes it shows the, the different colors on there. We'll be able to use those and-
So maybe it would make sense for you to come back? You know, at some point in the future, maybe the science department sent a couple of kids and then we could actually see live on-
Yes.
Online what this looks like.
Yep.
And, and maybe share with the board some of the, the activities you've done.
Send some people out there with flashlights, if you're coming?
Yeah, yeah. And I know there's been talk about having some kind of a competition between, uh, you know, Assumptions got one now, Port Edwards has one, Wisconsin Rapids, who else? Port, uh, Port Edwards, I said that.
Yep.
So there's four, right?
Yeah, the four schools. And, uh, they're ready to grant, trying to write another one, piggyback onto it to get, uh, Pittsville set up and, uh-
Addition.
Yep.
Addition.
So.
Resources here for, for the other sites.
So do you have an anticipated date that it'll be online?
No, they just said hopefully soon. That was what I got. Part of it was, I gotta get this paperwork now. And, or actually, it was, I need to find time for this paperwork, so. So hopefully that won't take too long and then by the time they get it to the power company and then whoever has it takes care of it, so.
So the energy they're creating each day now, right now, is not going back on the grid?
Correct, so.
Wasted energy.
Yeah. And, and if you take a look, right now, we have the angle of this, uh, sitting fairly upright. It's the steepest. And, uh, because right now, we have it set well for November, December, January. And, uh, come February, we'll go out and we'll take those bottom bolts out on those, those upper part and just swing it a little flatter for when the sun gets up. So, uh, most of the time, it just stays in one place for anyone, but, uh-
So it's really ease, user-friendly to, to bolt?
Yes. What'd it take us?
Not even ten minutes.
Five, ten minutes to, to-
Oh, okay.
We, it was flat when we put the panels on. And then when we went out one day and tilted it up and, and then secured those bolts, so, um, we can get a little extra power out of it during the, the winter than what it was estimated, so.
Is there, is there a chart or something that tells you how much is set at the angle? Or you just?
Yeah, there's, uh, there's some different ones, but, uh-
They brought up this weird, they're, they're far-seeing thing, like it's a globe. Or what was that? To read the s- angle of the sun. You have to stare at it and it would bounce up at a certain angle and it'll tell you how much you're receiving percentage-wise for energy.
It's a little plastic dome and so then whatever reflects onto it, you can then see where it touches the graph that's down inside and you'll see if there's any trees that will be in your way or anything else blocking the, the sun at different times of the year. And, uh, so that was, that was one of the first things that was used to check to make sure the, the site wasn't gonna be blocked at certain times of day and so on, but, uh, so there was a, there was a lot to it, not more than-
Cool.
Did you have to remove any trees so it went black or put it a distance away from the building? So it, it limited the shade?
No, we didn't have to, not from where ours went in. Port Edwards had to take down a few trees. They were gonna cut down three of them, but a storm took down one of them, so we only had to cut down two.
And what impact does a cloudy day have on these panels?
Uh, it's gonna have a big effect. Uh, a, a real cloudy day is probably gonna knock down, uh, eighty percent of your, what it's producing.
And that's something they'll find out as they look at, say the numbers, that'll be cool.
Jacob and Dakota, did either of you work on last year's installation?
I wasn't here last year.
Okay.
I'm new this year.
All right. Well, we're glad you're in Nacusa. Welcome.
So this is the second set we have, right?
No, this is the first one.
This is the first, so this, so that, all that was planning last year.
That was all planning last year, yes.
Okay, so this is, they're finally in now?
Yep, they're finally in, yep.
Okay.
So.
And one question, what do you do about snow? Is it gonna melt off of there or? Got the gold every time it snows and wipe them off?
If you wanna get as much energy as you can, you can go wipe it off. But because those, those surfaces are pretty slick.
Yeah.
Uh, a little sun on there and that'll slide right off.
And black.
Yep, and they're black, yep. So they're, they're designed to be pretty slick. And they're pretty tough, from what they were telling us, uh, that, uh, they had some that went bad on them, so then they were, uh, practiced or checking to see just what kinda impact they, they- And, uh, they had, uh, they were taking turns throwing, uh, baseballs at them or stuff. It said, you know, just to see, because it said it, it'll take an impact at a ball drop from a certain distance. And so then they were just throwing at them and, uh, they said it took to like the, the third or fourth throw before someone broke one of them, so. So, uh, they are pretty-
Durable.
Uh, sturdy, durable that way, yep.
Do you have a special insurance on them? To insure replacement on them or?
Not that I know of.
Yep.
Is there gonna be a, uh, an enclosure around it with a gate? So people just won't go up there and start messing with your equipment or?
Not at this time.
Okay, uh, that might be something we might wanna look at, just to protect your equipment. That way, people won't come up and start playing with the stuff. Put a nice fence, a gate, so your students can go in there and do whatever they need to do. Uh, probably, uh, since we got some of that crush, since we got rock from the roof that we pulled off, what if we pulled grass up and put rock around it, so they don't have to worry about mowing it? I mean, that's free, we can do that.
Part of it, uh, that we're gonna be getting a sign, all, all four schools were gonna be getting a sign that's made and that'll be going on the backside of this towards the, the parking lot. And, uh, then I thought I would do a project that had, uh, some other landscaping, some fencing on to also kind of cover that backside that just makes it look more presentable and that. If we did some kind of fence, you'd have to have it a ways out in front of it so that the fence itself wouldn't interfere and, and, uh, so.
Something to study, though.
Yeah.
One of the things, uh, when they did do the, the selection, they wanted it to be, I mean, where you could just leave it and make sure you cut the grass around it, it's real user-friendly that way. But certainly, you know, everybody's probably going to decide on different solutions for, you know, having them fit in.
Yeah, but if we got free rock, maybe they'll just, they'll just fling it down.
Yeah, but there's maintenance here too. You know, weeds growing up in it.
Weed plus.
Weed plus.
Yeah, don't you guys do weed plus?
I don't know if you know that.
It's a weird.
But yeah, I mean, that'll be good if you guys take a look at that and come up with some.
Spring project, yep.
Yeah.
So do design and maybe some, uh, rail fences or something on either side of the, of the sign and-
Oh, that'd be nice.
Some shrubs and-
Yeah.
You know, that's just one quick thought, but we'll see what the kids come up with.
Yeah.
It'd be great to find out what goes online and, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be cool.
So there's a lot of, a lot of neat aspects to it.
Yeah. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
And we are expecting to produce more power than Port Edwards.
Oh, yeah.
And Wisconsin Rapids, just, just so you guys know.
Well, especially if we, uh, if we check it during the winter months now, because I haven't set more to friendly, and theirs will be set, uh, back one.
So right away, we're gonna overpower them.
Probably watch the video this meeting.
Kids get out there a little time, every once in a while, clean it off too. Yep, appreciate getting work in charge.
Jacob's already been nominated for that job.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Did, did everybody get their questions answered?
Good job.
Mr. Freeman, did you have any question? You're good?
All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work.
Nice to see the efforts you've made out there.
Next on the agenda, we have the administrative report.
All right, well, uh, we certainly are happy Mackenzie's here. And, uh, next month, we'd like to add something to the agenda, so we get a student report?
Um, next month, I actually can't make it.
Oh, okay, we'll start that in January then.
Okay. Well, I can send someone else, 'cause I've been talking to her about it too.
Okay. Yeah, we can touch base. Did you have anything that you wanted to share tonight?
No.
Okay. So we'll get you prepped for January, how's that? All right, Mr. Com, anything?
Um, if I may, um, I'd like to just have a couple minutes and talk about the new co-curricular code. When you approved it back in prior August, um, we agreed that, uh, between the fall and winter sports seasons, I'd report back on that. I was hoping when this report came that I would have nothing to report, meaning that we didn't have to implement it. However, we have implemented our code, parts or all of it, in three different situations, all of which involved, um, a circle process to, um, you know, identify the issues, identify who had been, who was affected by the actions and come up with a, you know, a, uh, agreement within the members of the circle of where the, where the, how the code would be dealt with. Two of those specifically were code violations. Um, one of those individuals right now is, um, well into the community service, actually, school service part of that code, which reduces it, um, by, by language, it reduces the, the suspension. Um, another individual, um, has moved out of our district, so that code violation will follow that individual to another district. And the other one didn't actually involve a code violation. It, it was a, um, a whole bunch of mistruths, half-truths, and misunderstandings between coaches, parents, and athlete. And we were able to bring that full group of people together and had a very successful circle, um, leaving it with full understanding of what took place and, um, I guess, from my opinion, feeling really good about how the process went. So that's how it's going right now.
Has that been, Mike, the feedback you've gotten from others involved as well?
I, I would like to talk about that because, but because there's been so few.
Okay.
Um, I think it could be singled out, but, uh, I will say the feedback has been positive.
Okay.
I'd like to be more specific, but the cell size is pretty small.
All right, but, but overall, you're pleased?
Yes, very pleased.
How about conferences? Can I just touch on conferences a little bit? I know you've had one night, right?
We had, uh, we had, uh, well, the, the night of last month's meeting. Uh, we had a four-hour session. We have another session coming up this Thursday, three and a half hours. Um, like always, not real well attended. We're looking at a new model for, for spring.
Awesome.
Which one of our action teams is, uh, is, is, is dealing with. And, uh, I'm hoping for, I'm always hopeful for a great turnout, but unfortunately, the people, a lot, most of the people that you would hope come out aren't the ones that come out.
So hopefully, this action team will look and find other ways to, to touch those families. Good?
Mr. Fran?
Sure, I'd like to take a moment. Uh, we're coming off a very busy week too. We had, uh, conferences on Tuesday and Thursday of last week. And we also had our in-service day on Friday. Um, one of, we are too, you know, we're making plans to figure out how we wanna use that second parent-teacher conference day and what does that look like? So we also have an action team working on that. On Friday, as a staff, we do have a couple of action teams going on. And one of those is looking at conferences in the future, but we also have our culture and climate team. We'll kind of, and we'll look forward to giving a report on their work in a future board meeting and where they're at. We also have a group who's, uh, studying the best ways to, um, bring in interventions with kids and help, you know, ensure learning. and help, you know, ensure learning, that's part of our, our vision and our goals and what we're doing right there. So we focused on that on Friday. Also, we spent time just with PLC work, but we also did a, to start the day, we spent time doing the hopes and dreams check-in with our staff and, you know, we're not at Utopia yet, but things are, you know, pretty good and we have the feedback that we've gotten with that. Most recently today, we did a little work on PLC facilitator training. And I think I'll, I'll let you maybe talk a little bit about that right now, if you want anything.
That would be great.
Well, a lot of it, and again, this is gonna be related to new business items, so I was trying to unload that a little bit, but one of the particular item of working with PLCs is that how can we move from just being able to, we've spent a lot of time in the last year or so structuring some time that for people able to work to do that, but that doesn't necessarily ensure that productivity. And one of the things we were specifically struck by during some training that we went to over the summer was the use of protocols. Very specific ways of, ways to, for example, look at data, look at professional reading, professional development and those type of things, so we can have tools and methods in place. So people are not just, no, what are we supposed to be doing here? But they can, they can move towards greater efficiency and just better understanding of how can we get things done. And that, we had our, had a session of being able to start working with some people towards that with some staff and we're also make, moving that at each of the three buildings. And really, it's a, it's an interesting process. It's never just straightforward, but really it's helping bring things to the front of, you know, what are some issues that we're dealing with? But it's really engaging people in productive means of engaging with problems, as well as making some of the more routine procedures be more effective in what we're doing. And so it's, uh, it's a strong area of professional growth that really has a lot of possibility. And very encouraged by the amount of honest discussions we've been able to have it, together with ones that, just to be able to, we're recognizing a lot more things getting done as a result of it. So we're, I'm very excited about that.
Thank you.
Awesome. And Mr. Johnson, he is under the weather, so he's not with us today, but conferences, they've been, uh, last Friday was professional development in each of the buildings and we're really tailoring that, those professional development days to our strategic plan PLCs and, and really moving forward that way. I did want Brian to just talk a little bit. Did anybody else get a chance to visit one of the PLCs? So Brian, could you just touch on that?
Sure, I was able to attend three PLCs. Fourth grade, second grade and first grade. And he, you know, we kinda looked at visiting these PLCs as replacing our listening sessions from last year and trying to gain some understanding and, and what the teachers are going through and their needs. I found the PLCs and what my objective was is to be quiet for the first fifty minutes and ask questions after that. And it was very, you know, it worked very well. We have some exceptional groups that are together that, you know, PLC is happening all the time, but as Mr. Black mentioned, you know, we need to start looking at data-driven PLCs where we can look at actual, at where we're moving. I saw some more formalized PLCs in the, in the first grade and second grade. I was very impressed at, you know, the data boards and the information that the teachers had. A lot of information was discussed and, you know, one thing that these PLCs, also, you know, they bring out many things, but what I noted in just listening was, in some cases, a lack of resources in certain areas where we need to bring certain students up through different levels. Love, say, reading comprehension.
Sure.
And when we look at the resources we have available, we're stretching them in a lot of ways. And I think those PLCs, you know, with those data-driven results, will identify those areas where we need more specific resources. And, you know, I'm excited about it. It was very informative.
Good, thank you.
Any questions from any board members about, for anybody else? I would highly recommend it to anybody.
And, and certainly, if you're interested, we wanna, you know, we're gonna try to do this now next, this next quarter too, so. Lynn or Charlie, did you have anything that you'd like to share?
I'm just really working with the principals on professional development days. We had a training for educational assistants, actually on Medicaid, and making sure they were getting the most bang for our buck in filling out our forms and the services that we provide. We have our second training for people services, following the co-teaching training coming up. That will focus mostly on differentiation, that'll be at the end of this month, early December. I'm otherwise very involved in individualized IP's and evals that have been coming up and lots to celebrate there. There's some great, great teams working with students.
Awesome. Good. That's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much for the reports. Next on the agenda is new business. First item is Nexus presentation. I think we're gonna talk about phase two opportunities.
Actually, phase two, Nexus is in the hall and they'll be coming to us shortly.
They're coming.
I believe in the packet I indicated that this is an informational session and that December would be, they would be coming back for board approval. That is just a plan, that is not in stone, so don't, I mean, if you're not ready to approve it in December, by all means, don't. I mean, we want you guys to be comfortable with this. So, um, Mike, I'll hand it off to you, Mike David.
Okay. All right, um, thank you very much. Why don't, oh, he's gonna slip around through the back.
We got the scouts here and I check it on you guys.
Better stand up first.
Yeah, stand up.
Do you want me off to the side? Okay, well, while we're getting set up, excuse me. Thank you so much for being this time this evening. We've been very, very busy since we got the initial go-ahead, I believe, back in May. And we, you know, quick did the, the phase one project, so some critical work could be done during the summer of twenty fourteen. During that time, concurrent with that, we kept going and developed kind of what is known as phase two, some more comprehensive approach to looking at what do the Nacoussau schools need more from a long-range planning perspective. We're pretty excited about what we have to show you here tonight. We had an opportunity to meet a couple of times with your administrative team. First, just kind of give a broad brush look and then we spent some time, quite a bit of time, last week, doing a deep dive and taking a look at each and every line item and kind of, uh, kind of discussing and cussing every, everyone and trying to, trying to really prioritize to say, you know, what, what makes the most sense for the community going forward. As Lynn mentioned, no decisions, of course, have been made. You know, that, that's ultimately up to the board, but what you'll see here tonight at least, kind of the administration's kind of first recommendation to the board. And we, we want you, we wanna introduce you to it and then get the board's feedback. We'll be handing out the comprehensive reports. We want you to take those with you tonight and over the next couple of weeks, mark them up and give us your honest feedback back to us and then you'll revise it accordingly. Okay? Uh, with me tonight, you've got kind of the entire, not the entire Nexus team, but the group that led the effort on project here. Russ Schumacher is one of the principals in Nexus, leads our design group. He, his group focused specifically on the mechanical systems here. Hans Knoll is our lead project development engineer, led the overall development of the project. Jeff Mangan is the account executive, will be responsible for your long-term satisfaction. Also worked in development of financials. And behind me here is Brent Jones, one of the other principals with Nexus, who oversaw the development and developed the financial plan. And again, my name is Mike David. The things that, when I talk to you about is just to re-ground everybody on what were our goals and objectives. Again, obviously, the school board, like a packed house here tonight, you deal with a lot of different objectives, so what we just wanna do is ground us all on what were we focused on with this initiative. We'll revisit where we are in the development process. We'll touch on a recap quickly of phase one, being that some pretty neat things were done. We've got a lot of, a lot of good feedback on it. And I'll, I'll tell you, it's one of these things where we work in school districts, you know, all over a two-state area. And it's really pretty neat when you can drive up to a building and see that you actually make substantial change and it's, it's, makes it out really worth doing, quite frankly. And it was neat, neat to see you get a lot of positive feedback from the students. So again, I think we're gonna just celebrate that real quickly. We're gonna spend the majority of our time on the comprehensive analysis. We've got a lot of information to go through tonight, so we're, we're gonna kind of keep it at a pretty high level. Feel free to stop us along the way, because out of respect for your time, we're gonna keep it at a pretty high level, but if you want us to go down, get down into the details, these guys have all spent so much time in your buildings, they'd love to talk about them. So feel free to ask questions, but again, just, we're just gonna try to be mindful of your time. We've got a potential timeline, kind of where we're going from here. And as, as Lynn had mentioned, we have a tentative conditional approval scheduled for December. But again, that's just tentative. We wouldn't ask you to make such consideration until the board is fully comfortable and ready to do so. We say Q and A at the end, but again, just feel free to ask those questions along the way. Again, key here today is just to review the plan. We're not asking for any decisions to be made. The objectives that we set out for, or set out to accomplish, first off, is how do we improve the safety and security of, of our school buildings? In a, in a nice quaint town like Nacoussau, you'd like to think that we don't have to worry about that, but the fact is, we do it in, in all communities. So we'd be remiss if we didn't address that. Second is, we're kinda, how do we address our facilities needs? So it shouldn't matter what grade you're in, you know, what school you're in, you have to have a quality learning environment with, with which to attend. So we're looking at how we put all the, all the classrooms on, on par. How do we improve the quality of learning environments again for all of our students? At the same time, how can we reduce the cost of owning and operating schools by reducing the, the utility and operating costs? Oftentimes, it takes money to do that, to, you know, to make those improvements, but we don't wanna do that at the expense of taking money from the classroom. So we have to find other ways to do it. We also wanna minimize the, the impact that we, we place on our local taxpayers. So we don't wanna take it from the classroom, we wanna minimize what we take from the taxpayer. It's obviously a pretty delicate balance here. As you've heard us say before, Nexus has a belief that a, a facilities plan, a lot of corresponding financial solutions on the plan, all is just a study and studies and binders on shelves, collecting down. So everything that we show you here today, we'll not only show you what needs to be done, but also how to pay for it. We're very excited to tell you that we can accomplish substantial improvements throughout your school buildings and have no tax increase to the local community. So I think as, I think as a board, you, you really have a unique opportunity to make some, a substantial difference. The scope for our project really addresses all of these systems and subsystems throughout your buildings. You know, so really, what you're looking at doing is making investments that'll improve the building infrastructure for the, the long haul. So you look at your mechanical, electrical systems, your energy, water conservation, deferred maintenance, hard escapes, being parking lots, sidewalks, things of that nature. Your building envelope, being the roof, windows and walls, technology, your life safety, security systems as well as roofing. Again, the idea is starting when you're a business manager, and I think possibly the board is well-recognized, that you had some expiring debts, you had an opportunity to make some improvements without triggering a local tax increase. The process that we started on, as I mentioned before, started in, I believe, late April or May of this year. We received the go-ahead after a competitive selection process. We were very fortunate to be selected by the district and you gave us the go-ahead, by the way, a PBA, your project development agreement. That kind of set the wheels in motion for both phases, phases one and two. Phase one, uh, was a, again, a fairly quick project, addressing critical roofing needs. We say it's complete, there is actually some work that is still ongoing, the lion's share has been completed. We now have completed the comprehensive analysis for phase two and we're here tonight to talk about the facilities plan, consultations. Again, our, our commitment to the district was we would develop a plan that met your needs technically, financially, as well as politically, okay? But ultimately, you were in full control of it, so you, we, we give you the opportunity to pick and choose. We have a recommended project for you, but you ultimately can pick and choose and build your, your own project. We're at this step today. Once you do have a, a plan that, that meets those three needs, we bring them back to the full board for approval. Then we move into phase two. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, who's gonna kind of walk us through some of the improvements from phase one.
Thanks, Mike. All right, so one of the best ways to convey the benefits of the improvements you made as part of phase one and will make in the future is through juxtaposition of before and after pictures. And right here, you obviously, obviously see the middle school roof, which was previously EPDM or rubber roof with ballasts, rocks pulling it down. And because it's a pitched roof, those rocks descended over time, stretched the rubber and it wore out. And, and now is essentially replaced, as of this past summer, with a, a new EPDM roof that is fully adhered, so no more rocks to worry about in the future. More dramatically, we think in terms of improvements are the upgrades made to the windows at Humke. You obviously drive by this building and, and see the exterior when you come to the district office here, but we thought in case you missed the, the way the old windows looked, those would be nineteen fifty-nine windows on the left. Glass block, not as efficient as the newer windows and look a heck of a lot better from the outside and especially inside. Yes?
Do we have the tool to break the glass like we were told we were gonna get?
No, you don't have the tool.
Are we gonna get the tool to break the glass, in case we need to break the glass? Like we were told we were gonna get?
Well, I think that, I'm sure, we could probably find a hammer or something there, but typically, I bet you could throw a, a chair or something through the, the glass and it'd work fine. I'm sure there's something in there, but we can find something that'd work.
We can find out what other places do too.
So again, here you see the contrast between the way the windows looked, the inside of the classroom and the way they look now. I've talked to a number of teachers at Humke, as I'm sure you have, and, and it's unanimous in terms of their enjoyment of, of the daylight. And it really lends to a much improved learning environment. And here you see another picture. So there's more to come in terms of improvements and in subsequent presentations to the board as we update you on the progress of these improvement measures. We'll be doing some more of these types of before and afters photographs to share with you. Okay. Turn things over to Hans.
Sounds good. I'm gonna go through the improvements we found. Obviously, like Mike said, we'll go at a high level once you guys get the books. Just to sure it's all in there, we describe what the existing conditions are, what the proposed condition, what we're proposing, you know, the full scope of what we propose to do and all the benefits. So when you get that, you can go through that in more detail. Before that, we saw a survey throughout the district. We really do this at every school district to understand what the schools, what the, the needs are from the teachers and the faculty themselves. These are some of the comments we got. I don't expect you to read through it, but what we found is a lot of stuff we're touching. This also led us, you know, to some items that we wouldn't normally look at. But as we go through the surveys, a lot of complaints about overlighting, about the HVAC system, hot and cold stuff that you guys have probably heard about. That's at Humke High School, a lot of the same, the air exchange tubes. That's, I think that's definitely the overhead VAV boxes, a lot of issues with those, that ductwork coming apart. And as you'll see, we're addressing a lot of these items. Also, as part of that survey, we did a, we basically asked, are you comfortable in the heating season? Are you comfortable in the cooling season? And are you happy with the indoor air quality? So this is obviously very subjective, either you are or you aren't, but this gives us a good benchmark of where the occupants are. So in the red, again, that's the heating season, this is at Humke. Based on ASHRAE standard, you're trying to have eighty percent of the people, four to five people, happy with their condition. Humke, we found obviously pretty close, not surprisingly, in the cooling season, well below that mark. And even more surprising, the indoor air quality was below that mark. So we wanted to look into that a little bit more. What we do, we do indoor air quality measurement tests, CO2, or, excuse me, understand how much outside air is coming in at those unit ventilators. The, the blue column is what's required per code when that area was designed. The orange column is what it was designed for, this is what your equipment could potentially provide. And the gray is what's actually being, was what was measured and what is being provided. This is units of cubic feet per minute. You'll see in several classrooms, there's no outside air coming in. The remaining, there was a, there was a, well below what's required. So that obviously, you know, is, is a little bit concerning. I will say, this is pretty typical of unit ventilators. Unit ventilators are those outside air units that Humke has. We've seen this at a number of schools. This is a, it's a cheap piece of equipment that doesn't circulate air properly. It doesn't bring in the right required amount of outside air. So as you'll see later, we propose to upgrade to those units. Switching to Alexander, obviously, we're much closer to being comfortable at, at all three phases. And then the high school, again, fairly happy with the, the heating side, but there's improvement. On the cooling side, they don't have cooling, so this is exactly what we'd expect. And a similar issue with the indoor air quality, you're using older air-moving devices. And that's one thing we've proposed as part of phase one to replace and what we're proposing here to replace and upgrade. Other item we wanna do is understand where you're using energy. We basically do a baseline of the district, dollar per square foot and units per square foot used. Compare it to focus on energy. Compare it to focus on energy average. This is your neighbors. A little bit higher, but not egregiously high, but certainly shows us again, there's room for improvement. And you'll see later where we've got quite a bit of energy savings. Look through each individual building. All right, what did we find? So we broke it up into four areas, environmental system, deferred maintenance, this is going to be parking lot, exterior items, electrical and safety improvements, this is going to be fire alarm, car access items, and then general remodeling, which is just that. Russ, you want to talk about the environmental systems?
Sure. Like as Hans said, the unit ventilators and how to improve air quality as well as add cooling to the spaces. You have a steam system there, which is an antiquated way of heating, switching it to hot water, which you can control better, more energy efficiently, as well as provide improved occupant comfort, as well as reduce maintenance with the decrease in chemicals that you have to use, not having a steam system. Air handling units in the gym and cafeteria, as they've seen the end of their useful life, looking at replacing those as well and adding cooling if appropriate. What we did is we took a look at the elementary school and we did a energy model of it so that we could evaluate. We put together three different options for adding cooling and improving the indoor air quality in the school. So a model helped guide us to the operational impact of each option.
Moving on to the deferred maintenance items, of course, we know there's some roofing issues over there. Working with the local contractor identified two areas, areas M and O, and these are areas that are broken out. Would be replaced with the new built-up roof system. The other areas, we would put aluminum coating on to extend the life of those areas, your existing investment. Exterior, there is a number of flaws in the existing stone veneers. Basically, we want to re-point those areas that were the grout or the mortar starting to wear away. Obviously, something that just naturally happens over time. If you don't address it now, water's going to seep in, you're going to get freeze thaw, and you're going to have those stone veneers start popping off. Additionally, there are proper control joints. This is again, areas for proper expansion and contraction. We found this isn't a really good picture, but you can kind of see where you've already got a natural crack. Doesn't seem to be a huge issue now. We asked the folks there if there's getting, if there's water getting infiltrating right now. There doesn't seem to be, but that doesn't mean it's not going to start happening next year and five years and start being a major issue. And then some chimney work. Found a couple doors that don't match the, you already made a good investment in aluminum doors throughout that building. Missed a couple doors that are more maintenance doors, so we've got an option in there to replace door O, F and G. Looked at the hardscape, really broke it out into three areas. You can see here, area one is the south portion. That's area we're recommending totally replacing the asphalt. Area two, that's the drive lane, is the newer area. It's no work recommended there, just watch it for and maintain it properly. And then the back area, area three, really needs to be replaced, dug up and replaced completely with new asphalt system. And then there's a number of concrete areas, this is sidewalks, where it's either cracked or heaved. We want to get those corrected. Moving into electrical items, obviously upgrading to LED lights within the whole lighting system, electrical distribution. You've got a number of pieces of equipment that are either impossible to get replacement parts or it's going to be very expensive. So this is a good time to update those systems. Do an arc flash study, which is kind of a retro commission of the electrical system, really improving the safety, replacing the fire alarm system, and then the public address system at that school. Door access, we met with your principal to review a potential door access system. These are all locations where we would provide door access entry into the building. What we do as part of this is we would rekey the rest of the building so that the only people getting out, in and out of the building are using their key or card fob, so you know exactly who's in the building and who isn't. And then a security system. Again, we, at elementary schools, we proposed two items. Outdoor cameras, really monitoring the exterior so you know who's driving by, what kids are doing, neighbors are doing outside in the parking lots and the streets around the building, and then an interior system. General remodeling, I think I've got some slides for most of these, but I'll go through it. Student services area remodel, we sat with Charlie and scoped out a good remodel of his corner there of the school and really make that more efficient. Bathroom remodel, right now, the building doesn't have any ADA restrooms. So we want, we proposed a couple options for upgrading that, but really what we look, focus on is one of the bathroom groups, got a net, refacing it, remodeling it, so it's got proper ADA access. The second are the small gym, replacing that floor tile with carpet tile, rear dumpster enclosure, adding a student drop-off and parking lot loop, and then repainting the entrance canopy. Here's the student service remodel, kind of an architectural layout where we propose to do, going from a congested area with three single bathrooms, really open it up, adding three offices and an entry, main entry point. At Humke, we talked to Keith quite a bit, a lot of safety issues with this Crestview. We're right now, there's buses going on, there's parent drop-off, kids running across the street. We proposed a new parking spot on the northeast corner. We moved that soccer field here. There's some real estate here we could put it. This right now is an asphalt area. We talked to the folks at the school, and really, that's not being used. So why spend money and re-Asphalt it? Let's put green area down so that you don't have to spend money on asphalt now or in the future. And then really rework this entry in so it's safer, we get proper one-way flow through there, and then re-straight the parking area, parent drop-off area, so it's a, it's a genius. Alexander, going and skipping into the deferred maintenance there, similar to Humke, although it's not as old a building, there's still, it's getting to be that age where there's some, there's some broken brickwork we want to get fixed. And then there's some, there's some mortar that needs to get re-cocked or tuck pointed. At EFIS insulation, or excuse me, EFIS, which is the exterior insulation and finish system, this is up on the higher portions. Certainly, you can see there's areas that it's deteriorated. We want to get that corrected, similar reason. If you let that go, water's going to get into the building and cause a lot of havoc. So want to get that corrected. There's also some areas that just need to be cleaned. What happens on the north side that doesn't get the UV light, you get a lot of mildew, so we can get that cleaned up now while we're correcting the EFIS area. At the dumpster enclosure, rebuild that. This consists of taking, probably talked five or six layers of coarse brick off and reworking that properly and providing the drip light so that the same thing doesn't keep happening. Two options at the middle school for replacing the windows. First option was basically just regas, putting new gaskets on those middle school windows and then resealing the edges. Right now, those windows are residential style window, they've got, which means they've got a single pane of glass, and then they've got a storm window. So they're not a traditional thermally broken and two-paint window. So there's energy issues there. Option would be to replace them all, similar to what was done at Humke, really get a nice looking system in there that's a properly, you know, a properly thermally broken system, double pay, provide energy improvement, and then also aesthetically, it would look much better. These windows are going on 20 years, well, they're past 20 years old, probably a 20 to 30-year life. So, you know, you could spend, when you see the books, you can spend, I think we've got about $50,000 for option one, and have to turn around and replace those windows in the next, you know, two to five years. So right now, we've got option two checked in, but that's something to consider. Middle school hardscapes, again, we've broken this out in a number of areas. Since these areas are all roughly the same age, you know, we're all recommending maintenance in the form of a cracked ceiling and then seal coating, not major rebuilding of any of the asphalt there. And then concrete work, like we explained, there's some cracked and heaved sidewalks that need to get addressed. Also, there's some drainage issues in this corner that needs to be excavated so that, excavated so that we can get proper drainage. Right now, water's building up and kind of encroaching on the drive lane. And then there's some water that's backing up on this north side. For whatever reason, the crown isn't really proper there, and you're getting cooling on the north side right by John's office. Also, door access system, just like Humke, identified five, or excuse me, seven areas that would benefit from having door access so we can monitor who's coming and going from the building. And then a security camera system. Again, here, we've got nine outdoor cameras to monitor the exterior and nine interior cameras. This would be an IP-based system, high-definition cameras, color. Obviously, the exterior cameras would be high resolution, so we can zoom in on license plates if we need to. High school, doing a lot of environmental IQ work, so let Russ talk about that.
Basically, an extension of the design approach for phase one would be carried into phase two with the 1969 classroom areas, having cooling added to the units, replacing your dual duct high-pressure boxes with standard pressure boxes, reusing as much ductwork as practical, but replacing what's needed to get velocities to where we have a nice quiet HVAC system. The 1969 gymnasium, HU, replacing that, air handling unit, replacing it, adding cooling, also replacing the 44-year-old wrestling and woodshop air handling units. Cooling is an option. We currently don't have that checked, but we would include space for a future cooling coil if you would want to add that in the future. We also looked at the dust collector replacement, adding some cooling to your IT area to keep, protect your infrastructure, and then recommissioning the HVAC systems from the 2007 area to make sure that they're performing as they were either originally designed or how the spaces are currently being used.
Big roof improvement here. Right now, you've got a roof that's having a lot of issues at the high school. This would be a complete tear-off and replace, similar to what is at the, at the middle school, would be the same type of TPO, fully adhered system. I've also got the correcting those two-stage smoke vents, getting those replaced and getting vents in there that don't leak right now. Again, masonry upgrades, there's opportunities for fixing some of the brick. There was some graffiti here, we can get that cleaned up a little bit better. This is a good picture of where you're, you've got some cracking going on the mortar, so it's simple maintenance that needs to be done so that we don't get water infiltration. High school, we found the windows at the library and IMC area there. You've got, this is the desiccant that's in the windows. I suspect these windows are original to the building. This is a good time to replace them now. You can see that the gasket is starting to harden there, so we want to get these windows replaced. Those are the 11 windows on the front there. Again, high school, we looked at the hardscapes there. Area one is pretty, in pretty bad shape, but we didn't include that right now because we're still trying to figure out if that's maintained by the city or not. So at the high school right now, we're only proposing area three, that lower area. And again, that's, that's maintenance in the form of filling the cracks and resealing the area. And then there's some curving and some sidewalks that need to be corrected there also. We also looked at the high school track, replacing that. The theater, quite a few upgrades. We worked with Bill there, identified the lighting system and lighting system, updating that. Fire curtain there, getting a new audio system and a new video system for that area, really bringing up 221st Century, a sound system. I guess this isn't, obviously isn't Broadway, you know, theatric style, but this is what you typically see in a gym and school, just, excuse me, a stage in school, just because it's sized so that you can do modern events there. And then again, six electric door strikes here. Luckily, here, you've got less doors than some of the other schools, so we were able to focus on a couple of the main doors. Here, on your security system, you've got a system that consists of 58 analog cameras and then two, excuse me, nine new digital cameras. What we propose to do here is to replace 38 of the 58 with new digital, keep using the existing analog. And the thinking behind that, a lot of times, we come into these schools and we realize that cameras are put up in kind of an ad hoc fashion. We find out that we don't necessarily need all those cameras, or we can, with newer cameras right now, they do a much better job seeing down farther down halls, having a better peripheral eye, because a lot of them have two cameras in one. So I would expect that we can eliminate areas. But before we, we just likely go and replace one for one, we won't, let's start with the 38 highest priority areas, and then we can replace the remaining as needed, if needed. That's the idea there and save some money. Number of general remodeling items we looked at here, starting with the academy area, moved that over into the existing teachers lounge, and then moving the teacher staff work area to room 202. Restroom remodel, again, the ADA issue in that it's, the building doesn't meet ADA from the path from the cafeteria to get to our ADA compliant restroom. So to do this, we proposed to basically resurface, completely gut and completely refinish with ADA fixtures, ADA egress widths in those, both the bathroom upstairs and the bathroom downstairs. This isn't in the 2007 area, that one does meet ADA code. And then also adding a ramp in that, in the cafeteria area to get up to that second level. Kitchen remodel, we interviewed the kitchen staff over there and worked with Matt to put a new layout to that kitchen. Right now, it's just, it's not, it doesn't work really well with the kind of a funky area where the walls are at. There's some new pieces of equipment needed. Right now, your hood doesn't meet fire code in that you don't have heating devices under that hood, so we propose a new hood, new oven, new dishwasher for energy savings, and then some, some new serving trays and some serving racks, really just modernizing that area, making it more efficient space. And then lastly, correcting some of the corridor areas, getting, getting that carpet ripped out, replaced with carpet tile, correcting some of the cracks in the terrazzo, and then adding some stair treads. That's kind of an ADA issue right now. You don't have any stair treads, so it's hard to see where the landing's at. You really need to get it off color in there, and then it's a slip hazard.
Excuse me?
Yeah?
On those stairs, can you put like a bullnose or heavy metal or something? Because the kids wear steel toes, and every once in a while, they want to kick the bullnose of the step, and that possibly causes me a crash.
Sure, that's something we can look at with those stair treads. And then at this building, of course, we want to upgrade the, just like the other buildings, look at upgraded interior and exterior lighting, replace that rooftop unit, and really rework the distribution within this building, put some electric reheat coils in here so that we can control, control where the heating and cooling goes and there's not so much hot-cold complaints. With that, basically, all those items, we found about $31,000 worth of gas and electrical savings through doing, you know, making these upgrades. But not only is there energy savings, obviously, there's some additional labor savings. I'll let Mike talk to those.
Sure. In addition to the, as Hans just mentioned, in addition to the utility savings, the improvements that we're talking about will also impact other parts of the operational budget. So to identify what that was, we took a look at, and this is just an example here, but if we've eliminated, whoops, a little aggressive there. If we've eliminated the energy wasted here, how else can we shrink the pot, okay? And one of the things that we did to do that was we looked at, what is the district kind of, an operational cost profile, and what does the district spend on outside purchase goods and services? So what are you spending to repair the roof on a regular basis, you know, just to patch it? Or where are we spending on mechanical systems that, you know, to continue to fix them year after year? Well, if we came in and did wholesale replacements, could we eliminate those expenses that we're spending with outside service vendors? And when we did that, we found that we could save an additional almost $50,000 a year. Okay, this is budget reducing savings in money that you're spending on outside purchase goods and services. This doesn't count cost avoidance or labor productivity savings, while those are all very valuable things. We can't pay the bills with those, but we can with hard-dollar savings like this. So collectively, our budget reducing savings is in excess of $80,000 a year, which in and of itself, in addition to the size of Nacusa, that's a fair amount of money. But it really gets powerful when you look at leveraging that with a performance contract. We could make $1.5 million of capital improvements on a self-funded basis. So when we start talking about, you know, different strategies of how can we do this in a very tax-efficient manner, this is a very powerful strategy. So instead of paying utility companies and outside service vendors, what we're saying is pay yourselves, okay? So we're going to sell your marked money in the budget for now, we're going to redirect it, you know, go get a third-party loan and redirect all the savings to pay for the loan. For those other items, like cost avoidance, productivity savings, while they're very good things, but again, you can't pay the bills with those, that's what the revenue limit exemption, what was put in place for, okay? You, District did a very wise thing in that for your 14, 15 budget, you built into the budget a little over $1 million on a budget, on a tax-neutral basis, that could be used for the future plan. And we'll show you how we factor that in going forward. But basically, what, just to refresh your memory, the revenue limit exemption, in essence, gives the board levy authority to make improvements that would reduce the long-term structural costs on the that would reduce the long-term structural costs on most of the community, which most of the things here, what we're talking about do, those that don't. Because you're addressing those either through the performance contract, the lever savings, or with the revenue limit exemption, now we've freed up enough of the, relieved the burden on the rest of the capital budget. You can now use those capital dollars to make the other improvements, okay? So that's kind of how we're trying to put the whole financial solution together. So you have needs, you have a way to pay for it. Why is now a good time to address that? We'll, we'll just consider the following. Interest rates, while they've ticked up over the last year, are still extremely attractive. We're showing here 3.75. If you were to finance this project today, a 20-year general obligation bond is probably more in about the 3.25% range. So extremely attractive, and that's locked in for 20 years. So that's locked in on a long-term basis. Comparatively, while construction inflation since the economy crash in 2008 has been down, over the last 40 years, it averages at 4.93%, so just short of 5%. And it's on the way back up. There's just a study that came out about six weeks ago that showed the year-over-year construction inflation is at 5.1%. Okay, so it's coming right back to normal. So if you have needs, do you address them? You borrow the money and address them at 3.75, or do you wait at 5%? The fiscally responsible thing to do is to address the needs, okay? So while we're saying costs are, or on the way back up, contract costs are still favorable, and there's no doubt that they're starting to snap back. Your district does have expiring debt, which would allow you to make substantial improvements while holding the local taxes flat. Okay, we're not suggesting it doesn't cost anything, but would have, would you as a board have a way to address and raising the local taxes? You also had gotten some additional state aid this year, which allowed you to increase the amount that you might put towards the project in the first year. Last one, at least, is the state has empowered school districts, as I, I think you're all well aware. I worked personally with the legislature, and there's no doubt that they recognize that our school buildings across the state are in need of repair. They've empowered school districts, and so far, spending very, considered very, very successful programs, to the point where they talk about expanding it to other municipalities. The timeline that we're on for phase two, the conference analysis was completed over the summer. We completed our initial review with your administration a couple of weeks ago. We met with, began with the administration, as well as with the principals and building engineers this past week. Went through everything on a line item by line item basis. I talked about the pros and cons and necessity of each and every item. We're here tonight in step three with just what we call our initial board review, so recognizing that we've covered a lot of information. We'll be handing out the detailed information to you in just a few moments. Once you're comfortable, we ask that we bring the project back to the board for what we call a conditional approval. And the conditions are twofold. First off is we have to complete a 30-day financing period, so by law, we have to give the public 30 days to do what's known as a reverse referendum. That they think that if they don't approve of the project, instead of asking them for their permission to do it, they have to petition the board and tell you to stop it, okay? I believe when you have a program that's very pragmatic, which the things you've seen here tonight are, you know, just makes sense things to do, and they don't increase taxes, I think it's very, very unlikely. It's always going to say, don't do that. Putting in, it is, that's what it is. There's a 30-day period that we have to clear there. Second is, we would obviously want the contract documents to be reviewed by the district's legal counsel. But since we have a phase one, I'm pretty confident that will pass after all the two, because again, your counsel's already reviewed them, and they are a very stringent review of laws, so. But those are the two conditions. Assuming that we cross both of those hurdles, we would expect that the board would move forward with final approval. On this schedule, we are projecting that in January. Again, that is assuming that the board is comfortable with that conditional approval in December. If you need more time, we by all means could hold that conditional approval in January. It's just one of the things where, believe it or not, the summer, the summer in our business, which is when a lot, a lot of this work gets done, is right around the corner. So we don't want, we don't want to rush you at all. At the same time, if you are ready to go forward, it allows us to start designing faster, get that much more work done in the summer of 2015, which just saves your inflation accounts, okay? We, again, once we get to go ahead, we complete our design work, and the construction would commence in the spring of 15. Most likely, depending on, on the scope of the project, would continue all the way through until the fall of 16, okay? Again, we would, would there be minimal work done during the 15, 16 school year? If we're going to mechanical, areas where there's a safety issue or we're not disrupting the learning environment, we would do that. But the line should work with what we've done during the summers. Key takeaways here, I think, as you see, is we're addressing a lot of district needs, okay? Really addressing all of the major capital needs in your existing buildings for the long haul. Literally, you've got a 20, 30-year solution here. Some of the solutions are literally designed for 40, 50 years, okay? The time is certainly right. Again, with expiring debt, you have, you have an opportunity to make these improvements without increasing the burden on the local tax, taxpayers. And as I state there in step three, this also reduces the need for referenda, and the next step would be project characterization and ultimately approval. With that, what I'm going to do is Jeff is going to hand out the detailed audits.
While he's handing out, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
EMS, the roof over the mechanical area, that's still stone. Is that going to get changed over, or is that just going to stay stone?
Yes, we're still, we wanted to get the pods or the fingers done first, and now, once the stone melts, we'll get in there and do the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. And at Humke, is there a way to get that rear dumpster off the playground so the garbage truck doesn't drive on it?
I think that's something, as we, as we, you know, we talked about the re, the new parking lot in the northeast corner and kind of the hardscape. What we'd, next step, once it's approved, is kind of put a small design committee together to make sure we're doing the right stuff, and that can be rolled into that and re-engineer.
Okay.
How that dumpster process happens.
And the last time we did a walkthrough of a school, I saw that hairline crack went down over the first grade wing. You go to the lunchroom, and you go that way. Is that the first grade wing yet?
Yes.
There's that crack, a hairline crack ran down. The last time we had a hairline crack, something not so pleasant happened. Can somebody just take a look in that crack to see if it's expanding, or if it's just there and not going to cause damage like it did last time around?
I could show you that, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And we do have monies built into the plan. There are, are of course contingency dollars, just under the same condition. At the same time, we've also built in an orders-controlled contingency or orders-discretionary fund. We set arbitrary amount, just based on the size of the district, of $100,000. The idea being that we've learned through the years that we could literally spend two years reporting, you know, put the whole audit together, the whole financial plan, and we'd get two months into the actual project, and somebody would say, ah, while you're here, we ought to have you look at this, okay? So we built money into the plan to cover just those types of things. If at the end of the project, it's unused, there remains a property of the district.
Okay. I'm just concerned that crack opened up to a big mess that we had last time.
While we're still in the investigative phase here, let's take a look at it.
Okay, then here's one other thing to investigate. And I know I'm going to get this question, because I get all the weird questions. At what point is it cost-effective to stop improvement Humke and look at a new building? I'm going to get that. I get a lot of questions.
Yep. It's a great question. Comes up all the time. Generally, you figure when your, your cost to renovate it exceeds 60, between 60 and 70% of the cost of building new?
Yep.
Okay, then you ought to be considering building new. Cost of building new, right now, it is around 200, 210 square feet.
So we're on the good side, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then that's something that we always take a look at when we're looking, especially when you have substantial improvements. It's just like, well, should our advice be, don't invest in the building? And but in this case, it's still a good thing.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
We just had a committee previously when we done 12, 12 million on the building. We went through that, and we had a committee that met five, six times, and we had another firm here. And that's exactly what they came up with.
Excellent. All right.
And that's why we, we actually considered at that time possibly building a new school. And they came up with the figures and so forth, that this school was a very sound school. And we hadn't reached that point quite, quite a few years.
It's, and it's one of these things where it also kind of depends on, on the initial construction, you know, was the building, you know, does it, does it have a good volume? Is it worth investing? Some, you know, some buildings were built a little more economically, some were built a little more solidly. Your buildings are worth investing in.
I hear you touched on it a little bit.
That's a very good story.
Could you tell us a little more detail about the air conditioning in areas of the building? Are we going to, is that part of the project?
I don't care.
Provide air conditioning?
I love it.
Yeah, short answer is yes. I believe we're going to, I believe that we're air conditioning all but a few. When, when the program is done, all but a few areas will be air-conditioned, but I'm going to turn it over to Gavin, who really knows.
Yes, shops and locker rooms currently aren't scheduled to be air-conditioned, but space will be allocated in the area.
So that all schools, all learning spaces?
Yes, all the learning spaces will be air-conditioned.
I have a couple of questions. In a previous board meeting, it was mentioned about the sports field lighting. Was there any, did you take a look at the sports field lighting? Were there any recommendations for any improvements there?
I follow up with Jason Becker.
Yeah.
And he, he didn't seem to have an issue with the sports lighting then. I think his higher priority was the track area, which we investigated. He felt that he had put some money into that, and that was adequate for now.
Okay.
That was a response I got.
And then there's a lot of concrete at the front of Humke. Is that, was that in here, and I just missed it?
Yep, yep. We've got some, some monies in there for correcting.
Oh, in the front, yes.
Public services, yeah, that's coming. Both Humke and, and the high school, we've got, we've accounted mine for correcting sidewalks. At the high school, there's also some curbs that need to be redone too.
Okay.
If I can answer that. The entranceway at Humke by the special ed wing is really.
That's what we were just talking about.
Is that overhang going to be okay there, or does that have to be looked at?
We need, well, we're going to look at that some more, but I think, I think that overhang's fine. It's just a matter of correcting the, correcting the concrete there that's here.
Okay.
Are you talking about the retaining wall?
Yeah, the retaining wall too.
The retaining wall is sitting on the concrete. Is that what, that's why it's cracking?
Right. So are those, those surface improvements, you said there's, we are able to do that because they're not really energy-efficient things, but because we have enough energy savings in the other areas, you can do those?
Exactly. Two things here. One is we use kind of some of the excess energy savings from the other areas. That combined with, and I'll walk you through this in a moment, we do have an annual capital contribution toward the plan, okay? The idea there is because we've addressed so many of the other systems with the revenue limit exemption or paid from savings, we've relieved the long-term burden on the capital fund. We can now use those capital dollars to pay for our external capital, okay? So just trying to make the best use of all of your knowledge, okay? Just to show you how this book is laid out, under your first tab, you have the PowerPoint presentation. It's the exact presentation that we walked you through, walked you through tonight. Under the second tab, you've got the detailed write-up that you've heard us speak about, which is the exact same information, just on a detailed fashion. So if you want a quick read, go through the PowerPoint. If you've got insomnia, go through this part, okay? And I shouldn't say that, it is actually, we, we take a lot of pride in it, and it's a lot of good information. We describe what the existing situation is, what the proposed improvements are, and then what the associated benefits are, okay? Those all have got a particular code number in the, in the green boxes. You'll see a little code number. That corresponds back to the final list here. Under the third tab, you'll have a, should have a spreadsheet that looks something like this. It just hopefully looks exactly like this. And this is the financial plan. I'll walk you through how this is laid out in a moment. Behind that, you've got the individual sheets that describe every improvement on a school-by-school, item-by-item basis. They're grouped into the exact categories that we walked you through in the PowerPoint. So the environmental systems, deferred maintenance, electrical safety and security, and building remodel, okay? So what I'd like to do is explain to you just how this sheet works. If you've got specific questions, we'll by all means answer them, but this is what we want you to take home and take a look at, and then mark it up, and get your comments back to Lynn and Terry. Don't get them back to us, and then we can respond or make whatever adjustments are necessary when we come back next time. Just to show you how this sheet reads, in the, again, looking at our spreadsheet here and reading from left to right, in the far left-hand column, you'll see vertically labeled as this project selected. If there's an X in the row, that means that that item is currently selected. If there's no X, that item is not selected, okay? So, so if we're looking at Humke, you can see that the first two items, HES, ES1A and 1B are not selected, and 1C is selected, okay? Couple things. First off, that means the first two aren't selected. Second thing is when you see an A, B, or C, those are options. In this case, the option recommended is C, okay? Further down, like I said, you actually see HESVR 2A is not selected. That means 2B is selected. There will be some other line items as you read through the spreadsheets that we just made, for whatever reason, we did not select an item. Maybe in discussions with the group, it was looked at, but was just deemed not a priority, okay? Further to the right of that, you have the BIM that's building improvement measure number. That's a code number that corresponds back to the detailed write-up. To the right of that, you have a brief description, kind of self-explanatory. But again, if you want to read more about the detail, that's in the write-up. To the right of that, under annual funding, you've got utility savings, natural gas, electricity, fuel oil. To the right of that, you have the O&amp;M, that's operations and maintenance savings. Again, this is what the district spends on outside purchase goods, business services, does not count any district labor. Of course, when we make the buildings more efficient, it's going to make the existing custodial and building engineer staff more efficient, but they're still going to be on the payroll, so we can't count that as savings. They'll just be doing more corrective things, okay? Kind of shift them from a firefighting to a fire prevention mode. The total savings is some of the previous two columns. The total project budget, okay, this is the total project budget for that line item. And for those of you that venture other construction projects, oftentimes consultants will talk to you about the construction, the construction budget, okay? And that's kind of the trade contractor budget. And you say, okay, so is that the total cost? And they say, well, no, then you've got it on your fees and permits and et cetera, et cetera, okay? Well, we've learned through the years, owners just want to know, what's it going to cost? So we give you the total costs, known as the hard and the soft costs, so contract costs plus design fees, et cetera, okay? It's a total budget. We then, once we've got the project selected, we will then develop plans and specifications, go out to bid. We'll show you the bids, award to the lowest responsible bidder. We guarantee the project will not cost more than this, okay? If it does, we've got responsibility to redesign it at our expense to get it on budget, okay? If it comes in under budget, we put that door to contingency. At the end of the project, remaining contingency belongs to the district. Makes sense? So what you're seeing here should be a worst-case scenario. The amount further to the right of that, so second column over from the left, is the qualified for revenue limit exemption. Those are the portions of that particular line item that qualify for revenue limit exemption. You see that a lot of items, the whole amount qualifies, some, none of it qualifies, so like your parking lots, things like that don't qualify. And then other, other projects, a portion of it qualifies, okay? And then further this column over to the right, the estimated FOWE, that's focused on energy incentive. That's the utility rebate. Nexus does all the legwork. We act as a liaison to secure those funds for you. The checks go directly to the school district, okay? The totals at the bottom of each page sum up only the line items that are Xed. Once again, the totals at the bottom of each page sum up only the line items that are Xed. The reason I say that is invariably, we come to the next meeting, someone said their math was wrong.
I was going to ask that question.
Been that all the time. So again, and you go through, and again, you'll see each school. Get a better idea of when we don't have some line items checked. If you look at the high school, you'll start to see that there's some items checked that someone unchecked. And again, that was based on, the items that are checked are based on our professional recommendation, but then along with extensive conversation with the administration, as well as one-on-one meetings with the individual school staffs. I don't know if, I mean, you folks, John in particular, if you got any comments on that discussion at all, or kind of catching the flat footed here.
No, no, I guess, you know, a lot of it, you know, having that discussion the other day, the things that I was thinking about. I think it's many things that what you were looking at too, that I look at and I was, I mentioned Terry a little bit about the windows, and where we're at as a building, and that's something that's, I think you're, a little bit, I lean a little bit more towards that, but that's a decision.
Replacing them, yeah.
Replacing them, because they're sustainable.
Okay, so then these sheets, those spreadsheets are interactive with the financial plan, okay? So as we X items in and out of the previous sheets, we can. So as we X items in and out of the previous sheets, we can update our financial plan and instantly show what the impact is on the local taxes, et cetera. Just explain how this sheet works out. If you look in the upper left-hand box, on the colored sheet now, okay? If you look in the upper left-hand box, this is where we've now integrated phase one and two, because long-term financially, we, we roll together. That's gonna be the, the best thing to do for the district long-term. So we have the phase one projects, that was two million, five hundred and eight thousand. We have the phase two RLE, those are projects again that qualify for the revenue limit exemption, ten million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Followed by the capital projects. Those are items that don't qualify for the revenue limit exemption, but we wanna have a truly comprehensive plan. We wanna show how they would be, be addressed. That's one million, nine fifty-seven, five sixty-six. So the total plan phases one and two, as it's shown right now, is fourteen million, six hundred and three thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. Then what we did was calculated the savings, and you, you got in a really great situation here in that we've got thirty thousand dollars of savings from phase one. We applied, and we're applying eighty percent of the savings, we had eighty percent of the projected savings. We had eighty percent of the savings from phase two, it's sixty-four thousand, four sixty-three. But then the, the way that the revenue limit exemption law works is it says that any measurable savings has to be applied to the debt service. Well, you're adding air conditioning here, well, that's gonna cost some money to opt to condition the air. So what we did was we took that as a negative savings, so we're reducing what's gonna be your measured savings, so it gives you more access to revenue limit exemption dollars. It's just a smarter thing from the district to do financially. So your, your net annual savings between the two phases is sixty-three thousand, oh, sixty-two. We then inflate those savings for modeling purpose, purposes at a rate of four percent a year. Typically, utility costs have been going up six to seven percent a year. Some years it's twelve percent, some years it's zero or one, but it blends about six to seven. So what that means is we are being conservative in our projections. The, the plan should perform better than what we're showing. The middle two boxes at the top of the page here, we show how the plan is financed. You would, you've got temporary financing called bridge financing for your phase one project. We would blend that together with your phase two project and put permanent financing in place. We're showing that done with twenty-year general obligation bonds. That's by far the most common way to finance school construction projects. I would say ninety-eight percent of our projects are financed with twenty-year bonds. Again, that's locked in for twenty years. We're modeling it at three point seven five percent. Obviously, those markets move every day, but right now you'd be at about three and a quarter, so again, we should be conservative here. Rebates are estimated over eighty thousand dollars. That's on a one-time basis. That would go to the school district. Our capital funding, we have that financed the same way, again, twenty-year general obligation bond, one million, nine fifty-seven, five sixty-six. And then, if you remember, that's actually down from the two point three that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
And what we did, that, that was because we got a little bit more aggressive on what we could do with the anti-revenue exemption fund. And the impact is we lowered it from like two point three to one point nine, and the annual contribution dropped from about one seventy to about one forty.
Ooh, that is better.
Yes, yes, I thought you'd like that.
Yeah, I do like that.
The real exciting news, two things. On the upper right-hand box, that gold-colored box, the tax impact, we show you how we do our calculations, but the most important thing is if you look at it, we have net levy impact of three hundred and five dollars. That's total across the whole community, so basically that's around the area. The impact is zero. You, you can make fourteen million dollars in improvements, and your taxpayers will see zero interest. And not saying it doesn't cost anything, but, you know, the, the needs clearly exist, and here is a way to do it without raising taxes. Okay? So the impact to your local community is zero. We also structured it in such a way that we, we got looking at it and said, you know, down the road, there's likely to be need, okay? And, you know, whatever it is, whether it's maybe operating dollars, maybe it's additional capital dollars, you know, whatever it is. So if you look on the far right-hand side of this table, this is a little bit of a change from when we met the other day, this kind of change in the finances, but on the far right-hand side, you, you can see that the tax impact, and this is annual change per hundred thousand dollars of home value, you can see that basically it's zero. And we get twelve years out, and we built in a step down of thirteen dollars, okay? Thirteen dollars per hundred. So what we're saying is, no one has a crystal ball, but if you get twelve years out, once our existing debt, or the debt we have to pay before this project, once that goes away, we built in a step down. So if we did need to come out with another project like this, or if we needed to go to a project where we had to ask the taxpayers, we would have a drop built in, or possibly the first thirteen dollars would be tax neutral. And just trying to think ahead, how, how can we get this plan to work for you long-term?
And Mike, I should mention that the drop rate will be better next, because we're just from zero valuation growth.
Yes, yes, excuse me. Yes, that's a great point. In here, we've got zero valuation growth, and I believe you're, you're planning conservatively about one twenty-five percent. Typically, communities are growing, you know, in normal times, which we haven't been for the last five years, but typically a community has been growing in the three to six percent range. Our plan here is built with zero. So if you get back to that two, three, four percent, what's gonna happen is your taxes are just naturally gonna go down. So we're, we're showing a flat here and drop of thirteen. You could very well be going down. And there's different strategies we'll work with on an ongoing basis, where you, that step, if, if we experience a normal valuation growth, that step should be significantly larger. Again, what you, what hopefully you're gathering from us is we've tried to take a reasonably conservative approach the whole way through, and the idea being that we want the plan to perform for you long-term better financially than what we're showing here, okay?
What I think of when you talk about this, I think at the time, only about six, six, eight years ago, the township of Rome was building sixty new homes a year. Now, we went through a period of time, they built zero.
Yeah.
Now, I go down there and ask them, how many new homes do, have you built this year?
Yeah.
Well, nine. So it's a long ways to where it was before.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
It's coming around.
It's, it's, it's moving slightly.
There's no doubt, and every community moves at a different pace for a variety of reasons, but there's no doubt that generally there's, there's increased confidence that we've, we hit the bottom a year or two ago, and we're, we're starting to get a little bounce, and some of it, but we're trending in the right direction. And again, what that would mean when, when you're adding, there, there's two types of property valuation increase. First is our homes just getting more expensive, okay? So, so the tax base goes up. The second is we add new homes, so the tax base, what I like to say, gets wider, okay? So we're spreading that same levy on a broader base, which means per homeowner, your taxes are going down, okay? The more good things, the broader the basis is, the better. And the more that we can do that, again, what we're, and what we're showing here again is, we've modeled this over twenty years, assuming no new homes, no new additions, no property value increases. If any of those happen, you're, what we're showing here, you'll have a steeper decrease than what we're showing, okay? With that, I've kind of went through things at a fairly high level, but I wanted to explain to you how the sheets work together. Recognize there's a lot of numbers, you know, we, our team works with them every single day. I'd ask if there's any questions, comments?
I have one question. You're showing a net annual savings of sixty-three thousand dollars in, I just said twenty years. Is that what we're basing this on, over a twenty-year period, that we should see that, that savings, or is this?
You should see that on an annual basis, for twenty years.
For twenty years?
Yes.
So, and continuing, it's beyond twenty years, we don't know.
You should still see it beyond that. I mean, you know, technology's only, only going to get better.
Yeah.
Okay? But we only model it for twenty years, because we model it for the term of the debt.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yep.
So now we purposely set it up so that you can chew on this, right? And they're gonna be back. Do we have the date?
Well, we have a workshop scheduled for November twenty-fifth at six P.M. If you guys need, if you want to have that workshop to talk about this again, to, you know, ask any questions that you need to, Nexus is more than happy to come down and visit with you guys.
Absolutely.
So we have it on our calendars, and you can just let us know if that works for you guys.
The twenty-seventh?
It's the twenty-fifth.
Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so if you're not sitting there, you can stand somewhere.
So we, we've got it scheduled, and we're just gonna plan for it? And if we see, we'd really like to get your comments and questions.
I, I think we should, we should have that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should plan for it. If that doesn't fit, we should plan for a different date, but we need another meeting.
Yeah.
So what you could probably do is if you think of your questions, you could certainly email them to me, and I can give them to Nexus so they can be prepared on the twenty-fifth to answer your questions on. And certainly bring any other questions with you on the twenty-fifth.
Yes. What time are we at that schedule?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
So were you going to touch it anymore?
Uh, no, this, this is all I had unless there were questions.
Well, there is one thing that I'd like, the, the heating HVAC at Humkey, like just some clarification on that if we could, because I think that's a big-ticket item, and it is something that's pretty complex. And I think that, I think the rest of the items, if you look at them, they're pretty self-explanatory. But that item, if you just talk about that, because the, the steam boilers over there are not that old, and there's some exciting news related to that, and then just talking about, you know, that system, because those unit vents I think are fifteen years old, and I think we just need to have a short little conversation about that. You really, I think, addressed that, that solution. It's in the book, but it's, it's better. I think you need to put some words around it, so.
Yeah, I'll just briefly describe it, and if you want more detail, we've gotta go into it. But the two systems, you got the ventilation for the fresh air, and then you have the heating for actually providing the heat, obviously. Currently, there's steam boilers in there that have, you know, ten, fifteen years of life left in them. We called and checked with the manufacturer. Those can, can be converted from steam boilers to hot water boilers with adding a few components. So we wanna reuse those boilers, get your investment that you've made into those boilers, get the full life out of them, and then the piping that's connected to it, changing from steam to hot water, so you're gonna be chemically treated with the steam chemicals, and, you know, steam is two hundred and twelve degrees plus. You can actually throttle these systems down to a hundred, hundred and forty degrees, and get some improved efficiencies out of those boilers, as well as improved temperature controls in the seasonal weather. That, that connects to your ventilation system, which again, you know, fifteen-year-old unit ventilators, we did check. They were designed to provide the amount of fresh air, but just by the way those are designed, actually distributing the amount that they're supposed to be providing is very difficult. Basically, distributing at the outside wall, it doesn't really make it into the inside of the room. CO2 levels tend to rise, as well as they have so many dampers, filters, fans. They have a lot of components in those pieces of equipment that need a lot of service, and that tend to go out of calibration and need operational assistance quite often. So we looked at three options. We looked at your, your unit ventilators, just adding a DX cooling unit in with a condensing unit that would sit outside, just like you'd see at your house, come into a coil inside the unit with the refrigeration, you know, piping connecting the two. Then we stepped back and said, what about if we went with a chilled water plant? So instead of having thirty-one condensing units, we'd have one chiller, and then running chilled water throughout, and then putting a chilled water coil in, and then connecting to the chilled water coil inside the units, which would involve a pretty invasive procedure, obviously taking all the ceilings down, running piping, disassembling the units, putting new coils in. By the time you disassemble these units, pull the coils out, put new coils in, you know, put the unit back in, you still have the old fans, you still have the old filter system, and you still have the old way of distributing air. So the third, the third option we looked at was a central system where we could put energy recovery units up on the roof with a shroud around them to enclose them, run ducted primary hundred percent outdoor fresh air to each of the units, and then basically use the, a displacement ventilation cabinet on the outside perimeter. And then, you know, it'll display some casework, obviously, put some bookshelves that we would build on each of the ends of the classroom to be able to support the storage that's required in each of the classrooms. But this displacement cabinet would allow fresh air, hundred percent fresh air to be, come out, enter the space at, at, at basically the floor, just like air is actually a fluid, pools the floor like a fluid, reaches all the occupants. Each occupant is warmer than the air that's at the floor. You serve actually as a chimney, and then it gets exhausted out of the space. So each classroom, in a sense, gets its own fresh air. It doesn't share with the classroom beside it. So we did check in, and Hans just pulled up a, a little bit of a, a demo on displacement. You see up at the right, smoke actually doesn't come out of the units, that's obviously. But that kind of shows how the air enters the room, about three to five degrees below the set point. So if you've got a seventy-two degree set point in the room, it'll come in about, you know, sixty-six to sixty-eight, pool across the floor, reach the occupants. Your body serves as a chimney, and displacement air and fresh air moves past the breathing zone and gets exhausted out of the space, as it shows there. A very effective way of ventilating, something that we've been doing for about ten, ten years successfully and in classrooms, and you can definitely tell the difference, because instead of overhead systems that basically have to take the air, introduce it at a lot colder temperature, fifty-five degrees, condition all the air above you in order to make it down to the occupants, and then get pushed back up to be exhausted. It actually works with physics. That warm air rises, brings it across the floor and up out the ceiling. So it's a, it's a, it's a ventilation approach that we're big believers in, and one that we advocated and checked in for, for Humkey.
And Russ, it's not a forced air in, in the bottom? Is it, it's a very gentle?
It's a gentle air. It takes about a third of the air from, from these rooftop units, and then it takes and recirculates about two-thirds of the air inside the space, and then brings it gently across the floor and then up and out.
Yeah, it's one of those things where when, when you put your hand on the diffuser, you almost can't feel the air coming out. I mean, it's real, real social, it's not drafty. It literally is designed just to let the air just literally pool or flood along the floor and naturally rise. And very, very successful concept, the air. Whenever you're, we're, whenever we walk into a school that has displacement, you can just tell it, you know, schools tend to. They have a certain smell to them. You walk into a school with displacement, and it just smells very clean and crisp. And every one of our clients in the last, you know, call it fifteen years, that has tried it, has standardized on it. The other advantage is, as opposed to the unit ventilator solution, which doesn't deliver very good, you know, it's bad maintenance-wise, bad indoor equity performance-wise, and they've got a, you know, call it a fifteen-year expected life, these systems are designed to kind of one-and-done. It's a forty, fifty-year expected life. And, you know, that you gotta change filters, things like that, but the filters are more decentralized locations instead of, you know, in each unit ventilator like, like they currently are. So better, better quality performance, better energy efficiency, lower maintenance costs, longer expected life, so.
I was gonna ask about the maintenance. I've been involved in a number of different air conditioning units where inevitably, every year, there's some kind of maintenance that hasn't been done on the system because it doesn't work right.
Right.
And this is, like you're saying, is that lower maintenance works more efficiently?
You'll have, you know, when you're adding air conditioning to the buildings, you know, there will be, they, they need to be like preventively maintained. But what we're talking about is instead of having distributed systems where you've got a unit in every classroom now, you'll have one main central unit. So one year able to get at it during the, the school day, and it's again, one, one big unit as opposed to the fifty small ones.
So the units in the classroom basically just have control valves with coils to heat and cool as needed for the space, and all the maintenance is in the central, central ventilation unit. And one chiller, again, a chilled water, not DX at each one of these. So we're big believers in less equipment is more.
So it is, it is something, it will make a dramatic difference. Now, there is a, a substantial upfront cost to it, but over the long haul, if from a lifecycle perspective, it's certainly the, the way, way to go. And I think Terry wanted us to, to talk specifically about it, because it is a significant investment in, in that particular building. But again, from a, a quality learning environment perspective, it'll be far superior, and again, it should lower the long-term cost.
Any other questions?
This is a lot of material to just go through in just an hour or so.
Yes.
I, I think we need, we're gonna need some time.
Absolutely.
To really find.
We have that meeting on the twenty-fifth to go back and.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we may need another meeting after that, you know?
Absolutely.
When you do this amount of money.
And certainly, we can have some conversations between now and then too.
Yeah, right.
You know, 'cause we've sat through now three of these, so we might be able to even answer some questions.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with that.
Now, these, these ones that you've got checked, these are the ones that administration has kind of recommended we do?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got some questions for you to take with you.
There you go, perfect.
Sure, all right, you're up.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, we, we've taken a lot of time, we'll be on your way, but.
Thanks for taking care of my dumpster. It's really personal.
Well, that's gotta be approved by the board.
Hey, they came up with a concept. I'm happy.
It's gotta be approved by the board. You're just looking at it.
I'm more than looking at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Wow, this is a lot.
Oh, good stuff.
Good excitement, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
This is my only question right now. This isn't the only item we have to look out for this school district. We have to educate the kids. And there's a lot of money that we're going to have to spend to do in the other areas of the school district.
Absolutely. And this protects that.
Yeah.
This protects instruction.
But, uh, you know, I'm thinking right now, are we going too fast? Or, you know?
No, I think, I think we have a, we have a prime opportunity right now with the interest rates and.
We do.
Tax levy going, you know, to this, this loan cover.
Revital, revital of it.
Yeah. I think this is a prime time to do these improvements with the weakest project we have available to us.
Well, the one thing that concerns me, I'll talk to you about a little bit, is now that the Republicans have total control, the voucher school concept, how fast are they going to expand it? And where are they going to expand it? And what's its impact on schools and funding? Cause if they go wild, knowing that they can do what they want, all of a sudden, school funding starts dropping off because more voucher schools pop up and more of the money gets sucked away in other areas. It may affect us in some fashion or form.
That's a great question.
That is a good question.
But let's not go into that tonight.
Yeah.
We'll hold that.
I will.
Yeah, that, that is a great question.
We're going to segue to the next, uh, agenda item then, and that is the PLC coach stipend.
And everybody did get that on their calendars, right? That upcoming meeting?
When is that? Is that Friday?
Tuesday, November 25th at 6:00 PM.
Oh, for this?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
I would say one thing before we move on. This company is, does a super job.
Yes, they do.
Of, of putting material. I mean, this might be complicated, but I'm sure we can, we, we will thoroughly understand this if we spend time on it. They do a super job.
I love that. Thank you.
They do. Cause I've been dealing with, and some of these companies are unbelievable.
Well, they, they speak layman's terms and I love that.
Yeah, yeah.
Great to work with.
They really, they're, they're a great company to work with. And, uh, their, their workmanship shows it.
Absolutely.
And I'll just say one more thing, that this is a prime opportunity for boards in futures to say to you guys, thank you for doing this now. Oh, yeah. This is unbelievable. So, it's a good thing.
This is where we fix the problems before they become bigger problems in the future. Really suck down the money.
Now I'm done.
Mr. Whitmore, you're going to.
I had to be with him.
Uh, yes, between Mr. Black and myself, yes. Uh, we had talked and I had talked to the board individually regarding the PLC facilitator role. And, uh, what we wanted to share with you and, and Nathan alluded to the fact that he started working with one of the teams today. So, uh, we had shared with you, uh, the information regarding the PLC facilitator role. And I think you all got a copy of the, the role, right? And talked about the, the outcomes, et cetera. Did you see that? In your package?
Yeah.
So, what we wanted to do is just answer any questions that you have. And Nathan, if you'd just, uh, talk a little bit more about how you see the role unfolding as it relates to, um, yes, we've got our PLC teams meeting right now on a regular basis, which is, is a great thing. But again, it does come down to how do we help our PLCs continue to grow? So, we really looked at a couple of different areas where, and this is going to be an ongoing thing that's going to be changing as we build capacity of PLC teams. As we've been out and about talking about it, you know, there's some PLCs that are saying, you know what? We'd rather not have, have to do it because they don't want to necessarily, uh, take away from the rest of their team. It's more, they want to be more we. So, teams are talking, okay, let's do every other year. I'll be the facilitator this year, Doug next year, Brian the following year. So, there's been lots of good conversation around it. But I think the main, the main purpose of this is really to have, um, a, a team member on each PLC take a leadership role. So, Nathan, if you want to talk just a little bit about.
Well, if I can speak to what this is not. Um, for example, mo- many districts, and we have not had one, uh, this role of places. You'll have department heads, you'll have someone who's responsible for making agendas and doing all the clerical work and those type of things for it. But this is instead where pretty much where they're take, pretty much designated leader of a given team. Um, in a professional learning community, everyone has professional duties and different strengths that go to that. Um, we're specifically going with the term facilitator because that is the role that they're doing. They're making sure, they're doing work, for example, facilitating the discussions, helping make sure, like mentioned, I talked to protocols earlier, uh, take some specific training on what it means to, so, it's not just a matter of implementing a given protocol, but they, we are providing each of the teams with a range of protocols and they need to figure out what's the best match for this team. For example, a team at the elementary school where you've got four teachers that are teaching common subjects day to day, are going to need protocols for data analysis that look at how can we compare results, um, classroom to classroom on a given unit test. Whereas in, um, some middle school teachers, like for example, if I've got the seventh grade math teacher, um, it, he has one set up. For example, they can, with the other seventh grade teachers, they can look at issues such as disciplinary literacy, but, um, that doesn't help them on math. And so, there are different protocols that would come into place for that particular PLC in those units that are looking at their data. And so, what we're saying is we're providing training on here's how to use, be productive in your teams, but you need to still provide decision-making locally at each given case. And so, we're really just trying to empower this, um, local decision-making.
And bringing it back to administration. So, if we've got some needs, uh, you know, each of the schools will have these facilitators getting together and really helping provide.
And to speak to that, that's one thing we were, uh, John and I saw very specifically in working initially with a group of this. Um, is that, you know, question would come up over and over again. And here's what's currently happening. People will come up, well, um, they want an interpretation or judgment call on both, what's this aspect of how PLCs work? And I'll say, great question. Talk to your building principal. Here's my input. Let's sort of work on that. Um, but that's very much one-on-one on one-on-one-on-one that the adminis- building and level administrators working with each PLC. Rather, we're envisioning that these PLC facilitators are meeting on a regular basis, talking to each other. And being able to see where the common, if there's a struggle here, perhaps this, all PLCs are different levels. And in several cases where this has already happened, um, not necessarily by design, but in case some, the PLCs are providing the solutions for each other. And, or find it when there's common clarification, um, that they can be handled in one place. And that, and more and more, we're finding that that is beyond just the gains we hope to see from the individual PLCs functioning more productively, that this is really making a sustainable way of interacting and making adjustments as we, as we go. And so, that is the, so, but to do that, you need skill, you need resources. Um, you need ability, you need time to select and make the right call and be able to do the behind-the-scenes work of, you know, being able to make sure that you're ready with the proper protocols and the training to be able to do it and be able to have the resources available, um, to be able to make those calls. And so, that's what we're proposing, to basically create this.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Role of, uh, and exactly how it looks. This is a pilot year, I need to stress. Um, we looked at, we've looked at several districts who are using a similar model. Um, and based on early feedback, maybe we're not going to go with just that straight model. Maybe that's model's going to look different even from building to building areas and we can use adaptations. But the basic parts of it is we recognize we need to invest in our teachers' ability to be able to self-abdicate and solve problems at a local level. And we're trying to build up the infrastructure necessary to make that happen.
So, will the, will the, I, I believe the, it calls for what, 30 facilitators in the district, right?
As there are 30.
So, will the 30, uh, people be different from one year to the next? Could they?
I would hope they would. I would hope that we would get, because if I've got multiple people on a team who are being trained, then they can help each other. If, and, but how that looks is different PLC to PLC.
Sure.
But if the whole TLC says, hey, we all want to be trained on these things, you know, music to our ears. We want them to be able to gain this. And, and this would, um, and however, this also gives us a chance to be able to, um, if, to be able to just help people see at where they're at. Some will grab onto this, some will be more reluctant, but they can, we can leverage each other's strengths to help it move forward.
Sure.
So, lots of conversations in the last couple of weeks, just, just talking about it and, uh, learning from each other and, uh, the compensation task force met to talk about it. And we really want to study it, you know, throughout the year so that we are making a, a commitment that's really having good impact.
Sure.
On learning.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just got a question. I write when I get questions. I forget.
Please do.
Um, how would you gauge the effectiveness, effectiveness of the coaching model? Uh, let's say you've, you've got some coaching, you give it three years, you say, yeah, you're really not, it's not working. At what point do you say, let's change direction or the coaching's not, the model we want coach isn't right?
Well, let's see, to, let me speak specifically to, you know, how do we gauge the effect? And hopefully, we're looking at this closer than ever through years. Um, but what, as we are, how do we gain, how well this is working? We have key indicators. We have an i, I mean, we're going to look, we have developed a series of questions that give us an idea. If we're ever going to move from just project completion or task management to continuous improvement, we have to have key indicators for tracking. For example, um, if we are looking at, we're asking each group to communicate, um, with the administrator. What percent of, um, PLCs are doing that on a regular basis? How many of those, how many, what percentage of the times is the administrator communicating back to those? Those are numbers we can track and will be bringing to these groups to look at is, okay, if we are at 50% right now, what's the hangup? Where's it going to take us to get to 75? And I would argue that the effectiveness of given coaching model, um, as opposed to just one individual coach or those things, will be able to be in us looking at those key indicators. Simply put, just answer that, we are asking and training our students, our, our teachers to look at their student data to see where they're at. And we're requiring ourselves to do the same as administrators to see where our teachers are at. But our data is less in this form of here's a unit test, but more in the sense of here's the, we've defined very specific targeted outcomes. And if we can put, and if we can track the progress on those outcomes, sometimes we might be a little disappointed by some of the numbers, but quite that, that lets us know where we need to put our effort. And so, that's how, and so that, we're going through a process right now. And, um, we've spent quite, um, several hours on this in the past week already. And what will those key indicators be? How are we going to measure those? And how are we having the, how often are the teams self-reporting? How much are we verifying those self-reports by exterior data?
Okay. And then is there a, like if you're coming for funds from us to, to implement this, we're not going to say, okay, why don't you just do this for the next 30 years? I mean, do you want a trial period for us?
We're this is pilot year. So, we'll be coming back to you.
So, let's say, let's say, just approve it for two years. That we get the first year to get it off the ground, get everything situated, get a second year to see how it really acts. And if they can come back and say, okay, this is what we started with, this is how we're measuring, this is how it's working. Can we have another two or another three? That way, we're not saying, oh, yeah, well, just go ahead and do this and we forget. Oh, yeah, we gotta look at this again, five years down the road. And we say, yeah, we don't want to do this anymore because we're not.
So, if, if I can re, just understand the area, to be able to, what you're really interested in is looking is not just, here's the model and giving it time, but, I mean, we're going to be watching these key indicators ourselves. Would you like, and what you're talking about is let's sharing those. I mean, this is one of the things that we want to be able to celebrate successes and be able to not show, not just here's one where we're at. Let's show growth over time.
Right.
Let's say, here's our baseline of where we're at when this started. Here's the struggles, here's the choices that we made based on these data, but here's the growth we saw in those areas. I think you, we very much want to look at those and all the more reason we're tracking that because that can, that, that's exactly what we're using to try and figure out, are we making a difference?
Well, and plus, this fits with the strategic plan.
Right.
You know, this is better data that we're, that's evolving as a result of the PLCs than some of the, really the key indicators that we put in the original strategic plan. This is really where the, you know, the rubber, where, where the, you know, the rubber hits the road. So, I'm seeing real positives and I think that, you know, as we bring data forward from the work that PLCs are doing to really highlight the growth that's happening, your, your questions are going to be answered.
So, once again, do we want to approve financing this for two years?
Well, that's what you guys can decide, yeah.
And then say, okay, let's measure it. Did we, did it do what it was supposed to do? If it didn't, then let's cut the funding, take another direction and try something else. That way, we're not saying we're going to approve this and just let it go. And then somewhere down the road, you say, well, we gotta cut something.
So, I mean, we certainly could look at getting funding, uh, for this year. And then we could do a report to the board and you can decide and we can share with you.
And this is something that we certainly should revisit. Let me just note that the stipend amount that we did compared to other districts who are using this is a much below what they're doing.
Right.
And, and so, for example, if we would, and we take those in consideration about what is reasonable and being done in other districts.
Sure.
And we pretty much as a pilot year have, I'm not going to say lowball, but we set it at a much lower rate so that we can experiment, we can play.
Plus, we're partway into the year too.
And we are partway in the year.
And one of the reasons is, is this is not budgeted this year. So, I mean, we had to get a number where we're.
Be conservative about what can we can.
Live with.
Sure.
Right.
And it would be nice if you could approve it for a couple of years because it would be easier to budget for as well.
Yeah, but we don't know what amount that, uh, proper budgeting is until we get the end of our pilot.
But at least it's at, you know, in our foresight before the budgets process start.
That's a good point.
So, are we, is it, have you found a way to fund this?
I think the, the, the budget can absorb that this year. But it sure would be nice to have that line item for next year.
Have, have you, uh, talked with other school districts?
Yeah, Nathan mentioned that.
Brian already told me about one school district and I've already spent considerable time checking that school district out already. Uh, you know, to fund this. Have you checked on other school districts, how they fund this?
As far as the, the rate that they pay?
Yeah.
Yeah. And actually, yeah, you've, you've.
Well, I've looked at several, we've collected, uh, and there's various searches. I'm, I'm coordinating with other directors of instruction at the CC5 level, ones who are currently doing it. Um, and sort of comparing notes with them because we can find funding data, but what you're asking for is what's process data? What do they go through these steps to find those funds available?
Yeah.
And so, that's obviously not just generally available, but you have to sort of go back a little bit. And in many cases, um, they are doing this and putting this as far, consider this is the costs of a PLC model. This, if we're going to expect teachers to work in a different way, we need to, uh, support them a different way. And that's, and they're, and it's being done upfront more to that. Um, from, from our side of it, we're perhaps in, here in year three of this implementation. Now, it's very clear to us, here's what the need is. We're being a bit more conservative in the fact that we're not saying, here's a new model. Let's go ahead and fund everything we can about it and see where it falls. We're letting our, um, process emerge where these needs are and so coming to that level, so. But yes, we are getting some idea of where that is. And we, we are finding, for example, all right, that we can offset some of these this year even with grant funds and.
I was just going to mention, yeah, we do have some grant funding that'll.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Uh, I do. Have you talked to any of the teachers that would be the facilitator as, as to whether this is a sufficient fund?
Well, it's an interesting question on that one. And, uh, we haven't said, okay, is this enough or, I, and we, oh, trust me, we've gotten a range across the spectrum on, uh, various opinions on that. People are not shy.
That's good though.
But that's excellent. And, and in some cases, we found the fact that, that money is involved. Some people see that as a negative. Um, because they're saying that we would ra, and what, what is a different model of maybe helping spread that among the team as opposed to one, and they're not wanting people singled out. And, um, especially as we're talking about, let's work collaboratively. All of a sudden, if we're designating one person with these funds, all of a sudden, do they have to do all the work of it? Cause you're being paid for this or, and it's, it's negotiation. And so, we're finding that this is a good sustainable, this is a good amount to start having the conversation with. And I, quite frankly, if it would have more problems in those veins if it was a higher amount.
Sure.
To start out with.
Well, what if, what if you propose this plan and you only have about 15 people?
We've already, I can already speak to that, that we have proposed this plan. And of the 30, um, we've already approached them. We've already talked to several, and we're several weeks into this process of saying what, or at least the negotiations of it.
Sure.
And I would say of the 30, um, PLCs, probably in the neighborhood of four to five have issues to where they're trying to figure out where I can do this. But most are saying, we're very interested and let's, let's learn as we go.
And other districts have run into this too. You know, Brian's got an example that, um, I don't know, you want to share that story, Brian, or?
Burtonville, very similar experience. I think we're right on track. I think I, you know, I think there's no other questions. You know, why don't we make a motion to approve this stipend rate of the pilot year?
All right, there it is. It's part of our strategic plan.
I'd like to make the motion to approve, I'll write this down for you, Diana. To approve $15,000 for each of the next three years to pay for PLC coaches, approximately 30 coaches per year.
So, what was the motion? You're, you're actually stating the dollar amount to budget for?
I got a dollar amount here.
Oh, would you?
It says, it says $15,000.
I, I put a motion on that.
I put a motion on the floor to state an approval as presented, a dollar amount of $500 per PLC.
That's what I was under the impression of, yeah.
I have some motion I can-
Okay.
That's what Bob's got here.
Just what I said.
And I shut down pilot year.
But if we have more than 30 facilitators, then that-
Then the 15,000, that's it.
So it's probably better to state it at the first stipend basis.
Yeah, thank you.
First facility. I was talking to down the 30. That way, nobody would just arbitrarily increase the number, arbitrarily increase that $15.
Well, I think, I don't think the administrators would arbitrarily do that. I think, you know, I think we have some, you know, common sense.
Well, I wouldn't be worried about that either. What if, what if you decide to have 35?
Yeah, that gives them some flexibility.
Flexibility, what's the difference?
Okay, then I was going with my motion. Can you go with your motion, sir?
Well, he said for three years.
If you're okay with that.
I'm okay.
And what, Brian, what did you say for?
For the pilot year.
For the pilot year.
For the pilot year.
So now we've changed, okay?
So you're going from, I went from a three-year to a one-year, and you're okay?
I think we need, this, we're looking at a partial year here now, right? This is, this is a pilot year, we're already one quarter into the school year. When we look at this model for next year, as to how this person is going to be funded, there's going to, we're going to be taking the data we learned from this year.
Well, that's fine, I just want to clarify, you're a one-year, not a three-year. How soon do you need to know for next year if we want to continue funding this?
The summer.
Yes, okay, so sometime in the spring, we can revisit this?
Absolutely.
And then come back with a-
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'll say it.
We have a second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda is the joint convention conversation. I think this is mentioned about-
Yes, we are just making, we want to make sure that everybody's got on their calendars, January 20th through the 23rd, 2015. I know Brian's committed, Dave's committed.
I've committed.
The whole team's going.
I have to see what my boss is doing.
Come on, look at that smile, you're right again.
Why don't you register everybody? You can always cancel out three days before.
Have we got hotel reservations? At the Hyatt?
We're putting Bob up on 4/23.
Up he goes.
Everyone knows the dates of the convention, so contact Diana. Diana, are you just going to set up reservations for everyone, and then we'll go and cancel if someone?
You can always cancel out.
You can cancel, yeah.
And that's the way most districts handle it.
Okay, thank you.